Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, Common Council Meeting to order. It is six P M. If we could begin with the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilman Galloway.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States.
The people of America.
To the Republic.
For which was named.
One nation.
Under God.
Under the law. Justice for all.
Roll call. Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler. Sorry. Councilwoman Cutler?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Uh, I don't know why I was up front. Turn it up. Present?
Thank you. Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
I'm here.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
All present.
Thank you Clerk Treasurer Parthum. Petitions and comments of citizens, we will keep this open due to our county being in the red and we were doing this virtually. We want to make sure every resident has the opportunity to speak. As of right now, Mr. Otis, are there any comments or questions?
Uh, no, no questions.
Comments?
Uh, yeah, it looks like Mr. Delorme says he's here and Mr. Throgmorton mocks that justice is for all.
Of course. Well, Mr. Delorme, it's great to have you and Ruth here and great promoters of our city and look forward to appreciate your support throughout twenty twenty-one. So I would like to say today and this month is National Mentoring Month. And I have a proclamation and I can tell you this, many of you, all of us, have really taken time out of all of our busy schedules to mentor those in need in our community, at our school corporation, and doing something positive. So first of all, thank you to all of you that are mentoring. And this is National Mentoring Month and can make a difference in a young person's life. I would like to read the City of LaPorte proclamation. The month of January is National Mentoring Month and this proclamation recognizes the fact that every day, quality mentoring programs in the City of LaPorte connect mentors to our young people and cultivate relationships that provide crucial support and guidance as these young people grow and develop into our next generation of leaders. And research confirms that quality mentoring relationships have powerful, positive effects on young people in a variety of personal, academic, and professional situations. Ultimately, mentoring connects a young person to personal growth and development and social economic opportunity. Yet, one in three young people will grow up without this critical asset. And whereas young people who face risk factors but who have a mentor are fifty-five percent more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. Seventy-eight percent more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities and more than twice as likely to say they held a leadership position in a club or sports team. And whereas National Mentoring Month provides the opportunity to highlight mentoring programs that produce these positive benefits and to focus on strategies to grow their capacity to ensure every young person has a mentor. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Dermody, Mayor of the City of LaPorte.
I heard you.
Declares the month of.
I'm here.
Anne Higley, if you could mute. Thank you. Declares the month of January twenty twenty-one as National Mentoring Month in LaPorte and encourage each citizen to show your commitment and involvement with our community to ensure that every young person has the supportive relationships they need to grow and develop into thriving, productive, and engaged adults and future leaders. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana, this nineteenth day of January twenty twenty-one. And you know, the young people that are involved in mentoring are very lucky, but we as a community are fortunate to have people like Julie Sinclair and Bert Sappenfield who have run the mentoring program at LaPorte High School and the middle school and making a difference in young people's lives. So would anybody else like to comment regarding mentoring? I know Courtney, Tim, Nick, and a few others there have mentored. Any thoughts from the council?
And I, I think it's a great program. Um, I've been doing it for three years and have a good relationship going with my mentee. Um, it's, it's been just as rewarding for me as I think it is for him. And, um, and I look forward to continue doing it and making an impact in somebody's life.
Absolutely. Courtney, I know you've been at it, you're a veteran, thoughts that you'd like to share?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, similar to Tim, I, I think I get, you know, if not more out of it than my, than my mentee gets out of it. It's, it's meaningful and it's impactful for her and I, I enjoy every week meeting with her and, um, and seeing the progress that she's making and it gives me hope for, for the future of our young people.
Thank you. So again, once, I want to just take a minute and thank everybody at LaPorte High School, especially Julie Sinclair, Bert Sappenfield, who has really been committed to this program. They are making, they are making a difference in the future of our young people and look forward to see where they are as adults, hopefully here in our community of LaPorte. With that, I'd like to move on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
Oh, well.
Do I have a second?
I can't.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Standing committee reports. Mr. Frankie.
The school board met on January eleventh. The, uh, big topic was reopening under the new semester with, um, new three-day tactic, whether we're red, orange, or green. I'm not sure if there's another color in there, but, um, school started today. Our kids are back in school Tuesday through Thursday while we're under red. And, um, the next school board meeting will be February eighth. And Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday at five fifteen via Zoom.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Uh, the Airport Authority met last Wednesday, January thirteenth via Zoom. Um, highlights from that meeting, uh, they're, they're still diligently working on the five-year master plan. Um, the fuel pricing will remain the same as it was for December twenty twenty for January twenty twenty-one. Um, and to piggyback what was stated last meeting in regards.
Anne Higley, if you could mute your. Go ahead, sorry about that, Councilwoman.
Um, in regards to, uh, fuel sales, uh, year-over-year, year-over-year growth for Q four from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there was a fifty-three percent increase in fuel sales. So again, that reinforces, I guess, uh, alternative means of travel, uh, being the, the, the charter flights opposed to commercial. Um, so that was real exciting and, uh, positive growth to see there. Um, and some exciting news, uh, the Arizona Commemorative Air Force, uh, is looking to host another, bringing in another plane, um, the B twenty-five this August. Uh, we were very well attended this past year when the B seventeen came in. Uh, so they, they love the support from the community and the interest and would like to come back again this, uh, late summer, early fall. Uh, that is basically the synopsis for the Airport Authority. We'll meet again, um, next month and then the Tree Commission, uh, meets this Thursday via Zoom at five P M.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Merrit Commission met on January the twelfth. Um, see, right now they're two down. Come March, they'll be down another one because Carl's supposed to retire, Carl Jackson. Uh, they've ordered ten cars, the generator, they've done a little preliminary work. That shouldn't take too long. And they want to start up a SWAT team in the spring. And they want to train two people in hostage negotiations. Right now they have eight to ten applications. The next meeting is, uh, the ninth of February.
Mr. Galloway, did you say there'd be a generator in the police department?
Yeah, there will be.
I was glad to hear you say that. I never thought I'd hear those words out of your mouth.
You get tired of me calling you, didn't you?
There you go. Councilwoman Cutler.
This Improvement District Board meeting last Monday. It was approved to continue with the current officers, which are John Spiegel as Treasurer, Robin Clark Vice President, and Thaddeus Cutler's President. Also discussed was the remaining empty seat that's up for reappointment. And the board has a recommendation for the council this evening to review and vote on. That's it.
Councilman Vincent. Birthday boy, congratulations, happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. So I'll keep it short tonight, the next regularly scheduled Fan Commission meeting will be on Tuesday, February ninth at sixteen P M.
I know the rest of the team here has wished you a happy fifty-ninth, so enjoy your.
I really appreciate that, but it's a little early on fifty-nine.
Councilwoman West.
Uh, the next Fire Merrit Commission meeting will be, um, Wednesday, February third. And then I have nothing else to report at this time.
Councilwoman Ficus.
The only thing that I have to report is that Part Four will be meeting tomorrow virtually at four P M.
Thank you, and I know it's difficult, thank you for all your work. You all have regular jobs and appreciate you staying abreast of what's happening at each of the committees that are moving our twenty twenty-one forward. Um, Business Improvement District appointments, do I have a motion? I'm so, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Cutler, or all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, Councilwoman Cutler.
The board asked the council to consider Erica Kane. She's an operations manager at Dune Land Media located in downtown in the Big Mid District. She was a former teacher for nine years at LaPorte High School as well as a former writer for the Herald Argus.
Do I have a motion to approve Erica Kane?
I have, I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations and thank you to Erica Kane. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of an ordinance.
I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
Ordinance amending ordinance number twelve dash two thousand thirteen, an ordinance setting requirements for mobile vendors of the municipal code of the City of LaPorte, Indiana. Whereas the City of LaPorte Administration, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council that certain amendments be made to ordinance number twelve dash two thousand thirteen, an ordinance setting requirements for mobile vendors as enacted May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, of the City of LaPorte, Indiana. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte that Section One, under Chapter fourteen, Article Five, Street Vendors, Section fourteen dash one forty-two, permits and fees, the following language is hereby deleted under sub-paragraphs three F and four. Three F, vehicle identification number and description of mobile food vending unit. And four, annual permits issued to owners, operators, or for vehicles shall be valid for one year from the date of issue and shall be subject to a fifty-dollar annual fee payable at the time of application or renewal. Fee for weekly permits shall be at ten dollars and shall be valid for seven consecutive days. Permits issued under these provisions shall not be transferable or assignable. And replaced with the following. Three F, vehicle identification number and description of mobile food vending unit so long as the vendor has obtained all necessary County Health Department approvals. And four, annual permits issued to owner, operators, or for vehicles shall be valid for one year from the date of issue and shall be subject to a five-hundred-dollar annual fee payable at the time of application or renewal. Fee for weekly permits shall be at fifty dollars and shall be valid for seven consecutive days. Fee for daily permits shall be twenty dollars and shall be valid for twenty-four hours. Permits issued under these provisions shall not be transferable or assignable. Section two, in all other regards, ordinance twelve dash two thousand thirteen shall be unchanged. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval by the mayor and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion.
I, I would like to just make a comment that, um, one of the reasons that, uh, Tom Casey, the city planner, and I, and probably multiple other people have discussed, um, this change is because with the increase of farmers market and the fees that are paid per booth throughout the summer, May till October, they generally pay twenty dollars a table, so they're paying eighty dollars a month. And we're getting vendors who are setting up on the outside, um, every week and paying fifty dollars for an entire year, whereas our vendors are paying four or five-hundred dollars just to sell through the whole summer. Um, we didn't used to have that many vendors in downtown LaPorte. And this ordinance also has information in regards to who can set up and where they can set up, so it's a pretty clear ordinance, but the issue is that we really would prefer to have uh, weekly permits that, um, are competitive with the weekly or Saturday fees, um, for a farmer's market. So that's it.
And again, those annual fee was really unfair to everybody else at only fifty dollars. Um, and someone could set up shop on the street in front of a business. And I think this is a excellent change, Councilwoman Cutler. Any other statements, questions? Hearing none, this will move then to second reading on the first meeting in February. Councilwoman Ficus, introduction of the ordinance.
I move to introduce an ordinance proposing to change Section Seven only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. This is the reason you're only doing that because the rest of the ordinance stays the same except for that number six, for number seven. Council, or all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance of the City of LaPorte concerning outside city water and sewer collection services. Section seven, parties who reside outside the boundaries of the civil city and desire to connect to city water or sewer mains shall sign and record an annexation remonstrance waiver pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash three dash eleven dash point seven. Waivers shall run with the land and apply for future property owners and remain valid for the longest period allowed by the law. The property owner, owner shall be responsible for all costs associated with recording the waiver. All water and sewer mains extended from city-owned mains shall become the property of the City of LaPorte prior to customer connection. Water and sewer customers must remain a valid annexation remonstrance waiver to receive city water and sewer services. Should a waiver become invalid, the customer must disconnect from the city mains in ninety days. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after the passage of this ordinance by the Common Council and approval by mayor. End of proposed changed ordinance.
Council discussion. I mean, this gets back to our discussion of what we've talked about before. You know, we have to concentrate on our residents that are paying property taxes. Um, this does give us an opportunity, I think Mr. Otis did a very nice job making sure that, um, anybody that we may sign up or hook up down the road has an agreement that they will not fight.
Annexation.
Annexation, so, uh, Mr. Otis, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, uh, sure, uh, Mayor. So the, uh, I think, uh, Councilman Galloway, Councilwoman Cutler, and Councilwoman Ficus were probably on the council when, uh, the current section that's in place now was created. Uh, it was created, I think, at a time, it, the current section provides that we will not provide new utility services to anybody outside the city limits. And I think the, the theory behind that, the purpose was to prevent LaPorte Hospital from potentially relocating outside the city limits. I, um, I don't, everybody agree with me there, Councilwoman Cutler and Ficus and Galloway? Yeah, I think that was the intent. Um, so this is, uh, obviously a little, moving away from that a little bit, but it potentially encouraged the expansion of city limits. A couple of comments, um, on that. The remonstrance waiver is a relatively new requirement of Indiana code. Uh, and it actually gets recorded with the recorder's office, obviously for good purpose. If, if I signed an annexation waiver and it didn't get recorded, then I sold my house, the next owner may not know that that's out there. So that's the purpose of the waiver. The waiver is only good for fifteen years pursuant to the statute. So we printed the ordinance in a way that if their waiver expires, we could actually tell them either sign a new waiver or we're going to cut off service. So obviously we hope to annex before that fifteen years is up, but you can imagine there may be some property owners that were not in a position to annex yet because of their location.
But this is something that's necessary for our community to grow. And again, we can't just allow, um, to provide services to non-residents that don't pay property taxes. There has to be an agreement in place. The I U R C at the state level is only allowing for a fifteen percent increase on our fees. And, uh, we believe there's some value, um, to expanding our community and allowing non-residents to become residents. Any further discussion? We will move this then to the first meeting in February. Uh, Bert Cook, would you like to add anything from an economic development perspective?
Uh, Mayor, I just, uh, second kind of what you said here. I think this is, um, a, a huge tool for the city. We often talk about the need to grow our community. Uh, we have residential needs and, uh, industrial needs. So there's just a significant, uh, number of reasons to, uh, encourage, uh, our community to continue to grow and this is just another tool that allows us to do that. We're also providing a path for, um, individuals who want city services, um, to, to gain those services as well, so highly encourage and support the council.
I would also like to add, the, um, Indiana Senate is looking at an annexation bill that is reaching the floor, um, in the next couple of weeks here. I've been assured by Senator Mike Bohatchuk that he will be voting against the annexation bill, which would make it more difficult for municipalities to, uh, annex in the future. So, uh, here, Senator Mike Bohatchuk has assured us that he will be voting no on the floor uh, to support the city of LaPorte. So we want to make sure that happens and I think it's either Senate Bill ninety-five or Senate Bill ninety-two, but we'll be watching that closely. With that, let's check before, while we go to other business, if there's any, um, messages, Tom Delorme and Ruth Delorme, uh, have some questions here. Mr. Throgmorton, I see justice for all. That is very kind of you, sir, absolutely justice for all. We couldn't agree more and, uh, thank you for those kind comments. Um, Mr. Delorme, this may trigger with Mr. Frankie. Uh, what is the ordinance for golf carts? Um, he has interest there and I believe you can have a golf cart, except you cannot cross the state highway, is that correct?
No, I don't think you can have one at all in the city.
So golf carts, I thought you couldn't have one to cross the highway to go over to Beachwood, too.
No, you can't, uh, you can have a licensed golf cart. Um, it has to have an actual plate and, um, in order to get that, it has to meet various safety requirements.
Well, I know this has been a topic of the past in the Indiana Legislature, so, uh, golf carts, so we'll see what happens there. Also, we will be having a, on February tenth, with department heads, we will be having a Zoom Town Hall that you will all be invited to, so the public can hear uh, the goals of twenty twenty-one from each department head and more importantly, can ask questions. It'll be at six P M. Uh, more information to follow. Also, I think, uh, you were all given an update today that tomorrow before Board of Works, Baird will be, uh, the Board of Works will be approving a contract with Baird, which, uh, Clerk Treasurer Parthum has done a fantastic job as we look for the additional bonding for Newport Landing, for the contaminated cleanup. And, uh, Baird will help, uh, at a, hopefully save dollars and as well speed up the process of the bonding versus going on the market. Clerk Treasurer Parthum, anything you want to add there?
No, you, you said it perfectly, so, uh, because it's a smaller dollar amount, we've got a little bit more flexibility, which is why we, um, are asking the Board of Works for approval to use Baird services for placement or underwriting. Um, either way that we go, it's, it's around the same, um, it's around the same dollar amount, uh, but far less than, far less than going out on the open market, um, for a bond. And, and less disclosure in the, in the disclosure, um, in the future, less dis, am I saying it right, Johnny? Less disclosure statements in the future. Yep.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Um, also we'll be, uh, in the future here, short future, talking with the county about the north-south connector. And again, as we look at that today, you see the truck traffic downtown, you see, um, where is business supposed to set up in our community? Um, we have to look at the connector as an option. Uh, we've seen the studies where you might sit at a light on, uh, Lincoln Way for three cycles before you move on per light based on the future study. So, um, we're going to continue to have discussion with the county. Mr. Cook, would you like to add anything on the connector there?
Mayor, I, I think, uh, that you're well aware and the council has, has often had discussions about, uh, the effect that, uh, truck traffic has on, on our downtown. It's, uh, it's been a, a project that's been discussed for, for a very, very long time and, and I'm really pleased to see that we're, we're gaining traction there. Appreciate the partnership with, uh, with our county government and, uh, applaud Nick Minnick for the work that he's doing, making sure that this, uh, project remains a priority.
Thank you. And Nick Otis, I know Lisa Pierzkowski, will the community be able to speak for or against the annexation? And I believe in the process, they automatically have a right to speak for or against as well.
And I, I asked her what she, if she meant that under our amended ordinance or under the state statute, is that what, I, I'm not sure what she meant.
I believe she's asking regarding any future annexation that would be discussed.
Correct, right.
They will definitely have.
Well, the, so, even if somebody voluntarily, if, if an individual signs an annexation waiver, the city still has to go through the process of annexing it, so there will be an opportunity for the public, I guess, to speak on that if, if they wanted to.
And again, the main thing is we still want to offer water and sewer opportunities, um, to areas that are currently non-residential, or I mean, non, uh, members of our community, uh, non-residents, but, uh, we can't promise, as you've heard us talk in the, uh, in the past, that we can't promise that in the future. We have to focus on our residents and, uh, make sure that they're, they are taken care of. So any discussion regarding annexation there?
No, no additional.
Anybody from the council?
Mayor, just real quick, uh, you and I, uh, talked today on seven oh one and seven oh five, Maple. Uh, the apartment complex across from Y and C, of course, it's been condemned at this point. Uh, a receiver has been appointed, uh, by the LaPorte Circuit Court, who's effectively a third party that advises the mortgage holder and, uh, provides, you know, rent collection, you know, just manages the building. Uh, and Code Enforcement Officer Jeff Batch will be meeting with him on Thursday, uh, to hopefully begin a, probably quite some time, but a process to make that livable for people in our community.
And as well, as you mentioned that, I'd like to, uh, give congratulations to Victor Aguilar from the police department, who made a quick arrest from the shooting at Lucky's. That's the type of behavior. That's the type of behavior we cannot accept in our community. And, uh, you know, how many more things have to happen there before we move forward to, uh, closing that, closing that, uh, business there? So, um, I think Jeff Batch is working, the police are working, the state is working. Um, we can't continue to, uh, put our residents at risk. Any other comments from the public, from our council people?
I have a couple of comments.
Mr. Galloway?
Um, you say that, uh, this, this bonding thing is going before the Board of Works. Is that just the people that's going to control it?
That's just, uh, and again, Courtney, Clerk Treasurer Parthoon can talk. That's just allowing the contract so Baird can do the work for the city to find, hopefully
Placement. The placement services.
Nothing about the bond itself.
Okay.
Just finding it.
No, I've, I've got a remark here on the, we have two council people that are liaisons to the zoning, but on their planning, they are voting members. If they know it or not, they vote on the planning. I've talked to Paul. Who else is on the planning? Nobody?
I believe it's only Councilman Vincent.
Well, there's supposed to be two. No, anyway, we'll figure it out, but, uh, there's, there's two. And, and on the planning commission, they are voting members. Okay, so they know that. And there are two members.
Julie, Julie West and Paul Vincent.
Okay, then you vote voting members on the planning, which doesn't meet that often, but you want to make sure you vote to get in there.
Anything else, Councilman Galloway?
Oh, well, it's unfit for me. Motion to adjourn if you've got nothing else going on.
I've, I've got something else, uh, real quick.
Uh, Council President Frankie, if you'd like to share your thoughts?
Yeah, uh, unrelated to any of that, but your honorable Mayor, I'd, I'd like to ask for yours as well as my colleagues' brief patience and understanding as I shed some light on, uh, recent events at City Hall. See, I've found that a person can take on many titles or wear many of the proverbial caps throughout the course of one's life. Some of these titles may be given or appointed, while others are presumed or self-declared. Uh, for example, I'm humbled to have been appointed your council's president pro tempore. Examples of self-declared titles might be something like Chief Integrity Officer or COVID czar. Uh, with all of these titles one may identify with, I'd like to call the council's attention that I've recently self-assumed and appointed myself the title of the city's Chief of Grammar Police. Uh, this is not a position that I take the duties lightly, and I'd like to thank Attorney Otis for his understanding as I point out grammatical errors in his written ordinances, week after week. I know that there are few greater duties as that of being the city's Chief of Grammar Police. And my, my promise to my constituents in 2021 and beyond is that I'll continue to look through Mr. Otis's ordinances with a keen eye and find any of these grammars. Together we are better.
And Councilman Mikey, I will follow in your footsteps.
Thank you.
It is your world, Councilman, President Frankie. Uh, thank you for those enlightened, that, and those enlightened statements. And, uh, together, we're going to continue to work to make LaPorte a better place. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Against.
We are adjourned, everybody. Have a great evening.
Aye.